You do. You don't have to show up for the exam day?
Uh, no, I didn't, but that's just.
Just don't snitch on me. Then it would be base times twice the base, which would be squared. Oh, I don't know anything about that. I think they like to know what your grade is. We're playing, if you had your mind or your be out with you doing this with me, we're gonna move Monday's session to Thursday next week. I was gonna do it to this Thursday, but you know what? That's not having school. So the session on limits that was supposed to be Monday, we just wanna like circle it, arrow it. And you can do, you don't have to pick that one. No problem. Or you can do it online. Alright, so let's take a look. So first derivative test. We know f is increasing when f prime is positive. We know f is decreasing when f prime is negative. Critical numbers, when the derivative is equal to what? Zero or could also be undefined. Um, this is the study session from yesterday. Then for your math, how does this side have to change? Good. And then for a min for the next one, it has to change negative to positive. That's right. There's some changes plus to minus and then minus to plus. Okay, so we're not gonna work every example in the packet. The goal is just to work enough that you remember the topic. Okay? Um, so take a look at the first one. We have 300x minus x cubed. Where is the function increasing? Okay, so remember increasing, we want f prime to be positive, so we're gonna do a first derivative. Okay, take the derivative, what do you get? Mm-hmm, 300 minus. Perfect. Okay, then remember from there, we take the derivative and then we set it equal to, those are my critical numbers. So we'll take out a 3. We'll have 300 is now just minus x squared, and then that's factorable. How could we factor that? Close, don't reference the order. You have to keep the order the same. So the square root of 100 would go to 10. And then you'll do one with a plus x and one with a minus x. Which means what are my critical numbers? Negative 10. Then from there, we set up our line chart and then we should look for the right. So negative 10 plus 10. Uh, bigger than 10, say we pick 11. 3 is positive, 10 plus 11 is positive. What about 10 minus 11? Negative, which means overall this interval is take 0 in the middle, that's already positive. 10 plus 0, positive. 10 minus 0, positive overall. Okay, what about the last interval? Okay, it's gonna come out. Okay, because negative, let's say 12 plus 10 would come out negative. And then from there, remember also that we talked about f prime, um, that the signs of f prime tell you what f is doing. So for example, if f prime is negative, f would have been decreasing then increasing. This is the one we did yesterday that you already did. We're gonna the next one. So the front one is, yeah, there's three packets in there. So you've done the middle one. Uh, what answer we pick then? Increasing would be negative 10 to 10, which would be. Um, alright, take a look at the next one. Uh, we now want an absolute max. Okay, so first thing we're gonna do is take the derivative. What's the derivative of this? So bring the 3 down and then power down to the 3x squared. Okay, what would the next term be? 6x. Okay, and then the 4 is a constant derivative goes to 0, set it equal to 0. I can take a 3 out of there. So I have x squared plus minus 3. So we need factors of negative 3 that add to 2. What could we pick? Perfect, which means what are my critical numbers? Negative 3 and 1. Okay, then if I wanted to, I'd make my little line chart over here. So negative 3, positive 1. Pick a number bigger than 1, so we take 2. How is 2 plus 3 and 2 minus 1 gonna both come up? Positive. And then remember, we talked about if there aren't any double roots, then you know it's gonna switch sign. So like neither of these are squared, then I know it's gonna switch every time. So if this one's plus, then it'll switch to minus. So increase, decrease, increase. What type of extrema is negative 3? Okay, it's a max, and specifically it's a relative. And then what about at 1? Relative min. Okay, are they asking me where the relative max is, that I would just pick negative 3? Absolute is not the same. So remember, here's the difference. I know that the graph does this. It goes up, down, up. So let's say that my interval's here. And let's say this is my relative max. If I ended here, is that also the absolute highest point on the whole graph? Yes. What about if my interval goes all the way till here? Now is it still the winner? No. So what matters with an absolute is what your endpoints are. Okay, so remember, when it says absolute, you need to do what I call a candidate's chart or a candidate's table. And remember, the purpose of the candidate's table is to compare the winner of its own little region with what the endpoints are to see who is the absolute. So in your chart, you're gonna put the endpoints which are negative 4 and 2. And then if I want the absolute max, who gets to go in the chart to compete? Negative 3. I could include 1, but is it gonna win if it's a minimum? No, if it's the lowest in its own region, then you can kind of eliminate it from your chart. And then what are we plugging into? Which function? The original, very good. We wanna plug into f of x because we wanna know their y values to see out of all the y values, which one is the biggest. Okay, now unfortunately, this is a non-calculative question, so that's okay. Let's do it. First thing we're plugging in is, I'm gonna do 2 just because it's positive. So we're plugging into this right here. F of 2 is 2 cubed plus 3 times 2 squared minus 9 times 2 minus 4. What is 2 cubed? Uh, 2 squared is 4 times 3 is 12. Negative 9 times 2 is minus 18, and then minus 4. And then what I would do, just easy little trick here, combine the positive ones. What's 8 and 12? 20 minus, what's 18 and 4? 22, and then 20 minus 22 would be negative 2. Okay, so you will have to do some arithmetic like that. Usually the numbers aren't too big. Okay, next one we're plugging in is negative 3. Okay, we want negative 3 cubed, which is what? Uh-huh, negative 27. Okay, now next term, I want plus 3 times negative 3 squared. What's negative 3 squared? 9 times 3 is 27. Next term, I'm plugging in a negative 3 next to a negative 9. What's that gonna be? Another plus 27 minus 4. And then look at those numbers. What's gonna cross out for you? Have a positive and a negative that basically mean really I'm just doing 27 minus 4, which comes out to Okay, so so far, this is the winner, but we still have one other. Okay, so let's plug in negative 4. Negative 4 cubed would be negative 64. What about negative 4 squared times 3? That'd be 48. Okay, what about negative 4 times negative 9? Plus 36, close, and then minus. And then from there, I would do the same thing that you did last time. Put the negative parts together, put the positive parts together. What is 48 and 36? That'd be 84. And then negative 64 minus 4 more would be negative 68, which means you get 16. Okay, but however you do the derivative, it doesn't matter. And take your time as you go through it, because you've already taken all this time doing the derivative, so you don't wanna just quit at the end. Okay, out of those numbers, what's the absolute max? The max is 23. It happens at negative. So what answer should I pick? It's 23 and negative 3 both here. The max value would be Okay, so remember, when they say the max value, they're asking for the highest the graph goes, because we wanna pick that. Make sense? Alright, turn the page when you're ready. Next one. Um, alright, so we did first derivative test. Now let's look at second derivative test. Okay, your graph is gonna be concave up when the second derivative is positive, concave down when the second derivative is negative. Okay, remember, your points of inflection are when the second derivative is zero or undefined. And it only counts as a point of inflection if there's also a sign change. So if f prime doesn't actually change sign, then it won't count as a point. Okay, so your second derivative will be 0 or undefined, but there have to also Um, so we're gonna do the second one on here. So skip the first one, go to the second one. Okay, we have the f of x. We wanna know where the graph is concave up. What are we looking for? Okay, f prime would be what then? That's correct. Still taking the derivative, because we're going down to So 3 times 5 would be to the 4, good, minus. Okay, is that what I said equal to 0? No, derivative again. So we want f double, so one more. 4 times 15 is 60x cubed. Next term would be what? 120x, then I set it equal to 0. What can I take out of both terms? Okay, so I could do 60 and what else? x, which leaves me with x squared minus 2. Now, technically, 2 is not a perfect square, but you can still factor that. Think about whatever the square root of 2 is, I could still split it up into a plus and minus. So I'm gonna take this one step further and say, okay, that's really x plus the root of 2 and then x minus the root of 2. Uh-huh, and you still get plus or minus root 2. That's what he said was if you just set this equal to 0, you'd add the 2 across, square root it, and you'd get the same two. So if you like that better than factoring, totally fine. Alright, so what are my critical numbers? And so plus and minus root 2, and what about the x on the outside? Negative root 2, positive. Okay, so set up our number line here. And then what I like to think about when I'm trying to pick numbers bigger or smaller than a square root is change the number in the middle to be bigger or smaller. So for example, if I want a number bigger than square root 2, maybe I'll pick the square root of 9. Right? What's the square root of 9? That was perfect. 3, and then I plug in a 3 here. Okay, 3 squared is 9 minus 2 is positive, right? We don't even care about the number. And then what about say 3 times 3? Okay, now pick a perfect square root of a number smaller than 2. Square root of 1, what's the square root of 1? 1, and then I'm gonna plug it into this version that still kinda factored. So what's 1 squared minus 2? Negative, and 6 becomes 1. Okay, other side, say we pick the negative square root of 1, which would be negative 2. Well, that would still come out to 1. 1 minus 2 is still negative, but then I'm putting the negative on the outside. Okay, also remember the double root theorem. If it's not a double root, you know it's gonna change sign. How do I know it's a double root if the term is split? Okay, which doesn't apply to any of these, so I know it's gonna flip flop every time. Um, this is f double prime, so it's gonna tell me about f's what? Concavity, very good. This first one's concave down and up and down. So if we want f to be concave up, what intervals are we picking? Root 2 to infinity, which would be the same as, which answer choice? Make sense? So first again. Alright, next one. It says we have our function f. On what intervals is f prime positive and decreasing? Okay, so let's think about that. We want f prime to be positive and we want f prime to be decreasing. F prime being positive is what type of derivative test? First derivative test. And then if I want f prime to be decreasing, that'd be the second derivative, because think about, if f prime is decreasing, then its slope is negative. And what is f prime's slope called? The second derivative, right? Does that make sense? So it's basically asking you to do a double line chart. For f prime to be positive, we're gonna do a first derivative test. And then for it to be decreasing, we're gonna want the second derivative to come up. And then just take your derivatives and set up your sign charts. A nice, easy polynomial though here. What's the derivative of that? Okay, 3x squared minus x. Take out a 3x. What are my critical numbers? And what's the other one here? Now, remember, when you're doing a double line chart, you should try to line your sign charts up with each other. So I'm gonna set up my line chart here, and then I'm gonna leave this space under it for the second. So 0, 2. And then we're doing, uh, pick a number bigger than 2, say we pick 3. 3 times 3 is positive, 3 minus 2 is positive, so overall any double roots that wouldn't switch sign? No, then minus plus. Okay, this is f prime. And now we're ready to do our second derivative chart. Okay, go back to your f prime. What's the double prime for that? Well, you have to times the 2 down. Okay, which means take out a 6. What's my factors? Or what's my factor leftovers? Uh-huh, which means my critical number is. Oh, Denise, will you take the past sign? Okay, critical number is 1. Make sure when you put it on here, you wanna kinda line it up in the middle. And then bigger than 1, so we pick 2. 2 minus 1 comes out with positive. And then remember, if none of your roots are squared, then you know it's gonna change sign every time. Okay, which means this is concave up, then concave down. Since that was the second. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna highlight the shit, the signs that I want. I wanted the first derivative to be positive. So that's gonna happen here and here. And then I want the second derivative to be negative. So that's here. So then when do both of those? Negative. Okay, because remember, you're not just thank you to 0, yeah. Okay, but remember, you're needing both of those to be true, so make sense? Alright, turn the page when you're ready. Okay, let's skip to FRQ and do the multiple choice at the bottom. Okay, so we want f decreasing. Are we doing a first or a second derivative test? F decreasing would be Okay, so, um, look now at your f. It's not a polynomial, it's x squared e to the x. What rule are we gonna need when we take the derivative? You know, okay, let me give you choices, product, quotient, or chain. Product, because remember, if it was just x squared or just either x, sure. But if they're multiplied, then we can't, uh, we'd have to use one of them. So this is gonna be the product. Okay, so let's review what the product rule is. D dx of u times v is gonna be uv prime plus v prime. Okay, that's your product rule. And then remember, usually, we separate it and then just add the diagonals. Uh, that's how. So what would the parts of my products be if I made it u times v? u is x squared and v is e to the x. Then I take the derivative of both of those. What's the derivative of x squared? What about e to the x? Stays the same, very good. And then remember, the derivative is just this plus that. Doesn't really matter which one you put first, as long as you get both. So if this is f, what would I call the derivative? And then I'm gonna do this diagonal first, but like I said, so x squared times e to the x plus in the middle for product rule, and then 2x e to the x. Okay, but then remember, your derivative test works the same. You take the derivative, then what? Set it equal to what? Okay, anything I can take out of both of those terms? An x and looks like an e to the x as well. So I'm gonna take the e to the x and the regular x out. What's left over? From the first term. Perfect. Are we good on that? So out of the x squared, I'd have only 1 left, and then out of the 2x, I just have 2. Okay, let's list our critical numbers. Uh, the plus 2, what do I get? What about the x alone? Negative 2 and 0. Okay, now I want you to think about e to the x. When does the e to the x graph hit 0? No, what is that the graph of? That's exponential growth, right? E to the x goes like this. Okay, it just gets closer and closer and closer, but it doesn't ever actually give you an x intercept. So for this one, that gives you no solution. You don't end up with a third critical. Okay, so we have only 2 critical numbers. Put them on your line chart. Negative 2 and 0. Number bigger than 0, what could we pick? 1, okay, plugging in right here, 1 plus 2 is positive. 1 right here is positive. What about e to the 1? Still positive. Also, we're gonna grab, it never even gets into the negatives anymore. So are there any double roots? Then we know it's gonna switch every time. So this is gonna switch to a minus, this is gonna Remember that if that's the derivative, that tells me what f is doing. f must have been increasing, decreasing, increasing. Which means if we want f to be decreasing, what interval are we gonna put? Negative 2 and 0, which is letter. Questions on that? Oh, yeah. Um, okay, we're gonna come back to the FRQ at the top, but let's hit the easier ones first. So turn the page and go to this one right here. Okay, it says, uh, g is a differentiable function. g of x always less than 0, f prime equals this. Then it says, which of the following is true? We're talking about maxes and min. What type of derivative test does that, first or second?
First.
First, do I need to take the derivative? I don't have to take the derivative, I already noted it. So all I need to do is set it equal to So I would say, okay, I already have the derivative. Yeah, so I'm gonna set it equal to 0 and then factor, exactly right. So I'll have 0 equals x squared minus 4 is a plus 2 and a minus 2, just like mine just said. And then my g of x is just kind of randomly behind that. What are my critical numbers? Plus and minus 2. Plus and minus 2. Set up your number line, sorry. Okay, negative 2 and 2. And then what is a number bigger than 2 that we could start with? Okay, plug in right here. 3 plus 2? 3 minus 2? g of x? Look and see, what did it say? For all numbers, my g term is gonna be So then think about if these both came out positive, but g is always negative, then what's that first interval gonna be? Any double roots? Then we know it switches. Which means that I'm gonna go decrease, increase, decrease. What type of extrema is negative 2? Max or min? What about regular 2? And then I can just kinda look at the answers first. But you'd have to go back and say, wait, what about g? Oh, up here, it tells me it's negative. So we would want letter b, yeah? They're just all along with like Alright, look at the next one. Uh, it says, the graph is a twice differentiable function f. So this is a graph of f of x. Okay, and then it says, which of the following is true? Now look at your answer choices. We're comparing f, f prime, and f double prime. So all that you need to know is what each of those features mean. What is f of 1 gonna be if this is a graph of them? What feature would f be if this is a graph of that? Okay, this is a graph of that. I want you to tell me f of 1. So f of 0 is gonna be the y value. Okay, now let's find f prime of 1. What feature would I be looking at for f prime? This slope, and now look at 1, what's it doing? It's increasing. I don't know exactly how steep it is, but I can tell that it has a positive slope. What is the second derivative at 1 gonna stand for? And what's the concavity? If you look at your graph at 1, it's concave up, which means it would have been Which means it would have been. Okay, and then from there, you should have to put them in order. One of them is 0, one is positive, and one is negative, and I can place those in an increasing order. What would the smallest, you said which one? The second derivative is my negative. That's my 0, that's my positive, so B is my. Overall makes sense? All right, um, turn the page one more time. Okay, this one gives me some info at the top. Tells me I have a positive first derivative and a negative second derivative. What does that tell me my graph should be doing? A positive first derivative and a negative second derivative? Yes, so S is increasing. And concave is down. Draw a graph that does. Increasing and concave down. Both of them have to be true. Your graph should look. Like that, yeah. Is it getting steeper or flatter as you trace the curve? It's getting flatter. So then my graph needs to have jumps that are getting flatter as well. So let's look at the very first graph. How big is the jump from 7 to 9? What about from 9 to 12? What about from 12 to 16? For that graph, it's getting steeper. Because each time, your jumps are getting bigger. That is not what we want. We want it to be getting flatter. So look at the next one. What's the first jump? Plus 4 then? 3 then? 2, so that would be your getting flatter. Now, why would you be able to easily eliminate the last 3? They're not even going the right way. Yes, now the one thing I do wanna remind you of. Is that when you have a negative slope and a negative concavity, that's getting steeper. So just make sure you're careful that if they match, your graph is getting steeper. Go ahead. Um, okay, mainly have 2 left. Okay, so go back to that FRQ. Okay, so it says, find where F is increasing and decreasing. What am I doing if I wanna know where F is increasing and decreasing? First derivative test. Okay, which means I wanna take the derivative. Should I take the derivative of it with a fraction like that? No, what rewrite method? Could I do to make that like a normal derivative? I'll put the x up to the negative. So I'm gonna rewrite that as F of x equals, the x in the front doesn't change. But my 16 over x, I'm gonna write as x. Okay, they're different forms, but they're of the same equation, so I can switch that out to take my. Okay, what is the derivative gonna be then? Uh huh, but what about the x in the front? We gotta take the derivative of that one too. So I'll put F prime equals. The derivative of x is just a 1. And then my negative 1 times my 16 is a negative 16, x to the negative 2. Then from there, we're gonna rewrite that, where my x squared will go back down to the bottom. So now, it's gonna be 1 minus 16 over x squared. Okay, remember, you can't do a sign chart with random fractions added or subtracted with whole numbers. So we need to get that all into one term. So the next step that I'm gonna do here is get a common. Denominator, and what would I have to multiply to make that happen? X squared on the 1 on top and bottom. So do x squared. So now, I have one big fraction over x squared. And then the top is gonna be x squared minus 16. Can I factor that somehow? Okay, which would be what? Plus and minus. So now, we have our F prime all the way. We took the derivative. Got it into a fraction with a common denominator, and then we factored it. Okay, go back to your first page, or I'll just put mine up here. Look at the definition for F prime. It's anywhere. How many pages? Right here. F prime is anywhere that the derivative is 0 or undefined. What that means is you want any critical numbers that make the top bottom zero. So what will make the top 0? 4 and. Negative 4, and what will make the bottom 0? If x is the low, 0. Okay, so just make sure when we're talking about critical numbers, they can be from the top or the bottom. Either one is fine. Set up your number line. Negative 4, 0, and then 4. Now, before we keep going, which of those terms is a double root? Which of these factors? X squared is a double root. Why? Because it can never turn negative. No matter what I get, if I square it, what's gonna happen? It's gonna always be positive. So I know, I'm gonna write this right here. That x is a double root. So no sign change. Okay, now, if you don't care about that, you can always plug into every interval. But because the x term is squared, it's a double root, I know it won't change sign, that makes my job easier. Take a number bigger than 4. 5 plus 4? 5 minus 4? This is always positive. 4 wasn't a double root, so I know it's gonna switch to a negative. But 0 is a double root, that means it's gonna stay negative. These numbers have to match, so if this side is negative and it can't change sign, that side needs to be negative as well. Negative 4 was not a double root, so it'll go back. Then from there, we can set up our F stuff. So F starts off, increase, decrease, decrease. What type of extrema is negative 4? A relative max? What type is 4? And what would I call 0? Neither. Okay, because technically, it doesn't actually change sign. Basically, it goes downhill, it flattens out, and then it keeps going downhill. So you could call that sometimes a horizontal tangent, and say like the slope is 0, but it doesn't actually like curve to go the other. All right, so let's answer our question. It says, when is F increasing and decreasing? And when would we say F is increasing? Negative infinity to negative 4 union. One other spot? Or to infinity, because. F prime is what? Closed? F prime is. Positive. So remember, F is increasing. Because F prime was positive, yeah. Okay, what would my decreasing be?
Negative 4 to.
Okay, almost. There's one, you know, the AP test, they try to be tricky. Okay, at 0. If I have a dot at 0, then I can loop that all together. What's the problem with 0, though? Yeah, 16 divided by 0, that's gonna give you an absolute. So you actually would have to break this up. Uh huh, negative 4 to 0, 0 to. Because F prime is negative. Okay, but again, if that x wasn't on the bottom, nobody would care, and you could just breeze right. Okay? Then it also does ask you for the min's and maxes, but we already labeled them over here, so. All right, next question's asking me about concavity. How do I find concavity changes? Second derivative test. Now, look at your derivative. Would you rather take the derivative of this? Because that's F prime, or would you rather take the derivative? Okay, why? Yeah, and if I did this one, what rule would I? Quotient, don't pick that if you can avoid. So I'm gonna take the derivative of this. So F double prime is gonna be the derivative of that, which is what for the 1? Okay, and then what about the minus 16 x squared? Close, negative 2 on the negative 16 makes a day. Positive 32, and then what power on the x if I down? Negative. And then from there, let's rewrite it to be 32 over. Remember, critical numbers can come from the top or the bottom. The only x I have is the x on the bottom, and it's alone. So what's my critical number? 0. Set up your number line. And then at 0, say we pick 1, a little bit bigger than that, what's 1 cubed? Positive divided under 32. Okay, other side, pick a negative, will it get to stay negative when you cube it? Yes. So my original graph of F. Would have been concave down, then concave up, then where does the concavity change? At 0. So concavity. Changes. Okay, then it says in the next question, where is it concave up and concave down? Concave up would be on which interval? 0 till infinity. Because F double prime is positive. Make sure we're talking about the sign, did it come out positive or negative? And then for concave down, what would we put? Negative infinity to 0, because why? There's one question that I skipped, that I want us to go back and look at. Okay, look what it said. Identify where my graph's concavity changes. And then it says. Is this a point of inflection? Explain. Where did the concavity change? At 0. Is there a point of inflection there? Think about what we just talked about. So in order for there to be a point. In order for there to be a point of inflection, there has to be a point. Right? Okay, what did we say happens at 0? Well, no, look back at the original. If I plugged in a 0 to this, what would I get? Huh? undefined, which means this graph has an asymptote. Remember, anywhere that you get a divide by 0, you must have had a asymptote. So what happens with this graph is you do have a concavity change, but it happens on either side. So really, you would have only missed one point if you didn't catch that. Okay, but I'm gonna put right here. Not a point of inflection. Because x equals 0 is a vertical asymptote. And then remember. Vertical asymptotes happen whenever you get a divide by 0. So if I tried to plug in 0 to that original equation to check what the y value is at the point, I would get undefined if you're like, oh, I don't even have a point. That makes sense? Okay, so on your yellow sheet. You're gonna write the name of the session we just did. Go ahead and just put yesterday's date, since that's what happened. So you're gonna put 4-12. The topic was derivatives and particle, or right? Derivatives and particle motion? First, second derivative test. Again, pardon the motion. And then I'm gonna come around and say. Good job. And then there is another session today after school. Remember, you only have to get 3 to get out to the final. But 5.
Wait, how many more sessions are there?
A billion. And you can do any of them online. Yeah, you'll just show me the notes when you're finished. But I'll let you know by then. The videos will be at. Gonna be such a good day. No, I'll live it back through, thanks. Hi, Jackson, have a good day. Hi, Bryce, have a good day.
Hi, Gracie.
How are you? So good. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Well. Great, so good. We are. I just haven't put it out yet. Um, you do need to. You do need to, but we'll do a dig and work for it. There you go. How's prom? Yeah? Here you are. Uh, you guys also do need a calculator today. Yeah, you guys do need a calculator. Oh, that was. They got this hangout. It's sad that you don't. How's it going? You're failing, Michael? Yeah, congratulations. Is that why you didn't just go? I'm wearing a white dress and stuff right here. You're gonna wear a white dress to graduation? Uh, I wasn't here, so I couldn't tell you. Was it full? You were excited that I was gone then? I cannot believe this. Uh, yes. I'll give it to her as soon as we're done.